Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, April 8th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The first item on the agenda tonight is a swearing in of a new commissioner.
Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Not according to this agenda.
Oh, okay.
Balu Aier.
Sorry, Mr.
Julie, will you be swearing him in?
Yes, sir. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Balu Aier.
I, Balu Aier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Planning Commission of the city of Eden Prairie.
The Planning Commission of the city of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hanapin and state of Minnesota.
The county of Hanapin and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Aier, welcome aboard, we look forward to having you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, well everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you everyone, all right, moving on this evening, next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda, do you have any requests for changes?
Thank you.
Awesome.
If move to approve, all right.
Second.
All right, I have a move and a second, all those in favor approving the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held Monday, March 25th, 2019, do I have any requests for changes or concerns about the minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Far. Minor comment, very last line of the minutes, when you adjourned the meeting, I believe it was you, Chair Piper, that adjourned it, not me.
I think that's correct, right?
So noted, we'll make the change.
Okay, great, I don't remember if I was here or not, thanks. All right, any other requests for changes or edits? All right, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I move to, move for Planning Commission meeting minutes held March 25th, 2019, to approve those minutes on that calendar date.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. All right, moving on to public hearings tonight, we have one, which is the International School of Minnesota, LLC, location 6385 Beach Road, this is a request for a planned unit development concept review on approximately 55 acres, planned unit development district review on approximately 55 acres, site plan review on approximately 55 acres, will the proponent of the project has already stepped forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Will you state your name and spell for the record, please?
My name is John Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S, Principal of Harris Associates, located in Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Welcome, and would you tell us about your project, please?
I'm here tonight representing International School of Minnesota, first of all, I do want to say good evening to everybody, and give my thanks for the cooperation that I've had for the city staff thus far, and that includes Julie Kleema, Beth Novak Krebs, Kevin Schmieg, and Ken Cragness. So I'm here tonight representing International School of Minnesota, as I've done now for 30 years, in fact, this building that we'll be adding on to tonight was one of the first projects as a young architect I worked on back in 1989, and they're still a client today, and I've been involved in virtually every project on that site, so I know it quite well. Right now, this project is part of an extensive master planning process that we've been going through for almost two years at the International School of Minnesota, any of you that have been out there know how difficult a site it is, it's basically bisected by a wetland, extensive wetland that drains into Bryant Lake, and the development area that's available, we'll say, is tight, and it's also a very, very hilly site, it's a beautiful site, and one that I've really been privileged to work on. The master plan that we've been working on has many exciting elements, and many of them relate to technology improvements, HVAC improvements, new classrooms, new physical education facilities, and really a focus on healthy buildings, new technology, sustainability, and buildings that are more environmentally responsive. And as part of that, the school really seeks to look for a new architectural expression that would be reflective of these endeavors. The project as it exists right now, the buildings, I would call them conservative, they're all brick, two-story, and really followed a master plan that was set in place originally by Winston and Elizabeth Close of Close Associates, who are no longer in business, but a little side note is that Elizabeth Close was the first registered female architect in the state of Minnesota, and so it's quite the legacy that they've left at the International School of Minnesota. Two projects that are part of the master plan have actually just been completed, these are renovation projects, one being a new workout area, weight room wellness center and locker room complex, in addition, there have also been extensive renovations to the ECE, the Early Childhood Education Wing, which includes new lighting, acoustics, HVAC, all new finishes, so it's really an exciting time at the school. So I do have a PowerPoint that I'll go through quickly, and then I will answer questions.
Great, thank you.
And the PowerPoint will appear when I press that button. Which one do I press?
You don't have to press anything.
He should be switching it.
Yep.
I'll start out by saying that in your packet and the staff report, there is an overall aerial of the site that shows the full 57 acres, that is not included in my PowerPoint presentation, so I just want to refer you to that. As you can see, the property goes all the way down to Bryant Lake, and part of that master plan that we're working on is an effort to take more advantage of the lake, to more aquatic activities and more outdoor environmental education. I'll just wait until the PowerPoint comes on, I guess.
Just dancing.
There it is, okay. You can see, there's nothing I can really point with, I guess, the way the site is bisected by a roadway and a parking area from the north, as you curve around, you can see on the left of that drawing, if you take an immediate left, you go up the hill to the SABIS and ISM, additional classroom buildings and administration area, as well as a residence hall, first phase of a residence hall that we constructed three years ago. As you move down the hill, you can see the site is made up of three buildings that are very similarly shaped, sort of arcing off to the south, all walkout in that they're buried on the north side, and they're two stories, the one story on the north side of the buildings and two stories on the south. As you proceed further down, you can see the angled piece that comes off, kind of facing to the northwest, is a performance hall that we did about 20, 15, 20 years ago now, and then furthest to the east and south are the gymnasium complex and sports field. Our project, the one in red, is tagging on to the end of the second building, the second group of buildings that was constructed, that I referred to earlier at the International School of Minnesota. So this is a blow up of the area, it's very interesting, the way the site lays out, it's very difficult to get any kind of internal roadways outside of the main spine, because the site is so hilly, it's almost impossible to get any kind of internal circulation, so everything really has to be fed by this one spine that comes down, and all the buildings that are to the east side. So, this building, it's a two-story building, 5,700 square feet of new construction in addition, the, in gray there is shown the existing building, on the first floor, there's an existing kitchen and cafeteria, that's all being renovated, a brand-new kitchen, brand-new dining area, and potentially there's a future outdoor dining area to the south, and deliveries, both deliveries that come into the school for supplies and materials and for the kitchen will be coming in the driveway that you see at the top of the drawing, right now there is a driveway there already, we're slightly moving it, right now there's just a driveway, a little screen wall, and the dumpsters are stored outside, it's actually rather unsightly, so part of this project is to build a trash and delivery room where all the dumpsters and trash will now be stored inside. There'll also be an entry to the south of that, that is not intended as an entry as kids come in the morning and come into school, but it's more intended for after-school pickup, when children are having snacks, or the kids are having snacks, and their parents can be in the parking lot just to the west there and come in and pick up the kids at that Sorry, these seem kind of small now, now that I look at them, but I've got some blow ups, so it should help. Can I walk over to the screen, is there any?
Sure.
I would like to just point this up. So, from this point over is the existing building, our work starts at grid G here, this is what we call these pods, each one of these pods are 66 by 58, and then they're attached with these wedge, wedge ideas.
Excuse me, Mr. Harris?
Stairway on?
Mr. Harris, can you use the mouse so we can hear the microphone? Yeah?
Just point with the mouse too. Can I use the mouse to point? Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
This is great, thank you. So, like I said, this is the existing building, this area on the first floor will be renovated, cafeteria and kitchen, additional dining area here, we're opening up this existing wall, creating some storage back in this area, and the trash room here, so the deliveries will come into the trash room, directly into the kitchen, and back out into the school. In addition, there's a walk-in freezer right here. How do I advance this now?
Down arrow.
Oh, great, thank you. The second floor, as you can see, the school is, the existing school is a double-loaded corridor, we're continuing that corridor and creating a biology lab and classroom with an exterior biology garden, an outdoor education area, and a physics lab and classroom. These two classrooms are connected with a storage room that has a dishwasher, lab equipment, et cetera, there's also a small office here. This is just a little bit more of an enlarged first floor plan, you can see it a little bit more clearly, I hope, the entrance here, trash room entrance here, and this is the area where we're opening up the new dining room to the renovated dining area. Second floor, these physics and biology classrooms are intended to function both as lab and classroom, so these are four student standing desks, and in the biology, they'll have all the gas and water and electric, a teaching station up front with all the required emergency equipment all listed here, and some additional millwork, it's virtually the same in the physics, except we don't have the gas and the water there. It just shows, this is again the first floor, but this is a fixture plan actually from the kitchen supplier, so it really shows a little bit more of the configuration of this kitchen, it's really a very extensive commercial kitchen and is intended to eventually serve the population of the school when it tops out at about 1,000 students. So, it's really more like a college servary and cafeteria, where the students will have opportunities to go to salad stations, fry stations, beverage stations, you know, all these different things where they can make their own choices. All this area is virtually all glass on the first floor, and in this area there are punched openings, and one thing that doesn't show, and I should probably go back, in this existing opening here, we're going to be adding a door to access a future outdoor store, outdoor dining area. These are the elevations, if you take a look at the building, the south elevation of the building to the right, it's really pretty much what the school, is a version of what the school classroom buildings are like right now, they're very large windows, all masonry with a, with a kind of a stucco canopy up here, some of the more recent projects we've been working on, we've taken away that canopy and added some more, kind of a corrugated look, nichihua, which, you know, we're trying to make even the brick, it's not really part of this project now, but we're trying to even make the brick buildings seem a little bit more modern. We're picking up on the existing building, buildings, all the windows are white, all the doors are white, so we're bringing that as a means, using the white color to kind of tie all this together. You can see on the south side here, like I said, virtually all glass, the bottom area, and you'll see this a little better in the perspective drawings, the bottom area, this is a cantilever of about six feet here, as aluminum composite material metal panel rain screen system, the blue opaque, appearing opaque panels is actually spandrel glass, it was an effort to bring as much transparency and as much of Class 1 materials to the project as possible. These windows are also operable, which is something that, somebody had the foresight in this building back in 1988, a young architect, and had those windows be operable, and so now we're going back, and we're going to do operable windows again, so, again, that's sort of part of the idea of bringing the outside in. So we've got these metal panels, we also have this white nichihua cement fiber siding, which I'm sure you're probably very familiar with it, we just used it, we've used, I've used it on many projects, but I've used it recently at ISM, it's a rain screen system, it's kind of a clip-on, it's got a framing system that's part of the cement fiber panels, it's very clean, I think it has a 20-year warranty on the finish, it's all custom color. So you can see the vestibule that kind of sticks out here, the garage and back here, with the classroom up in this area, and the balcony that I, or the biology garden that we talked about earlier. On the west side, we've got a new stair and walk that goes up to pick up the exit from the corridor that I showed you on the floor plan earlier, it's a little hard to show, unfortunately, when you're converting SketchUp files to JPGs, you don't get the transparency that you really want, there's actually planned to do a decorative gate here, which is a wrought iron or a cut metal gate there to kind of shield the door to the trash room, it's not a requirement really, we don't think, just because there's nothing going to be stored outside, but I guess we'd rather not see a garage door there if possible. Again, extensive glass, nichihua, spandrel panel, metal panels running out through here, star of the trees obscure it, past the cantilever, and nichihua, spandrel glass and storefront, blue tint storefront everywhere else. This is a very boring slide, but it was an exercise that we needed to go through, because as you know, this isn't a public zoning, and 75% of the materials on a building are required to be Class 1, and so we did this to sort of prove out the fact that when the whole building is taken together, we're at 77% Class 1 materials. So this is just a means of showing the north elevation, this is the existing building here, it's all, virtually all brick, the addition here, and the south side, these are these wedge areas that I talked about between the three pods, we'll have the addition over here, of course, on the west side, we have no other building face, and that is one of the things that's mentioned in the report, that we are, we did request a waiver on that facade of the 75%, even though the building all complies with 75%. And like was stated in the narrative and the staff report, and my remarks previously, this is really an effort to, you know, right as you come into the school, you're going to see this new, modern expression of a building, and this is really what the school wants to convey to students, families, prospective students and prospective families. They still realize that, you know, the brick is sturdy, the brick will never go away, but really trying to marry a new, modern expression onto the older building. Then of course, on the east side, nothing's happening there, and that's all brick, with a very little bit of a stucco candy, canopy there. So this is a view from the southwest, you can see how the, we want to do some really nice plantings out here right now, right now, unfortunately, in SketchUp, it's really too hard to do topography, so right now, this area right here kind of dips down into a drainage area, which is being maintained and used, and we've gone through the watershed, and we're all good to go with the watershed. But you can see the cantilever, the nichihua, the metal panel that kind of frames this element, comes out to the cantilever, we want to create some warm wood siding and paneling on the soffits, both at the entry and at the cantilever, we've got sunshades on all the south faces, we don't need it on the south face of the first floor because of the overhang, but we've found, we put these on recently in the ECE, and we found them to be really, really effective. As you can see, actually, this sketch is done with real sun at about 5 o'clock in the afternoon in May, and so this whole facade here facing west really gets a lot of sun, so that's where the trees and the integral sunshades are really going to help keep that cooling load down. This is where that metal gate's supposed to be, and it looks like a gray blob, sorry, that's the way it turned out on the drawing, but you can see, these are new stairs that are coming up that need to be reconfigured to pick up on that north exit, the garage door is hidden behind here, the balcony for the biology lab, the entrance, trying to create a different paving pattern for the pedestrian ways, this is really not going to be used except for exiting, emergency exiting, so we're not really seeing that there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic through here, but there will be some foot traffic from this parking lot to the west into this building when parents come to pick up their children. And that is all. I am here to answer questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, your presentation.
Bring it back up if you want me to.
All right, any initial questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Stankis?
Sir, I have a couple of questions, in terms of exterior lighting on the west side, now there's residential property on the other side of the swamp or wetland, do you anticipate any impacts in terms of lighting, nocturnal lighting, anything that might change the silhouette from the perspective of people living on Beach Road?
No, we are not going to be adding any additional lighting except some wall packs on the existing building, which would be the same quantity that are there now, just probably a different style, but in terms of pole lighting, there's going to be no pole lighting added, the cutoff fixtures that are there right now will remain.
Is there going to be an opportunity for rainwater capture or recycling based on this new design and the addition to the existing property?
I think there would be an opportunity, it's not something that we've pursued yet, but there would be an opportunity, right now, the entire site has an existing irrigation system already there, so in order to recapture or capture the rainwater, we would have to put it in some kind of large cistern, I imagine, and then connect that up with the irrigation So it's not something we've planned yet, but it could be done. I can't pledge to do it because I'm not the owner, but I am, you know, Mr. Far would probably agree with me, that as architects, it's just happened my whole career, we're always trying to do stuff, and it usually gets cut out, it's just the way it is, because owners always do, we are doing a lot of things to be proactive about healthy buildings here, in fact, there's plans, and there's also plans to cover the entire rooftops of this campus with PV, which is actually, we've had a proposal and it's going to be implemented, but, you know, that has a return, that has a, you know, and the rainwater collection, I think, might be a little bit of a harder sell, because water isn't really that expensive yet, yet.
Got the initial questions, Commissioner Aier?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, the first question was really what you was talking about the stormwater drainage thing, probably, I think, maybe we have to work through the Hanapin County Watershed District or something like that, have a, I would envision some kind of a pond nearby the building to capture that.
Right, right, well, this, the way it, we did go through the watershed and got their approval, and we were originally thinking of doing a large infiltration basin where there's one currently now, which I described the squail earlier, that was very expensive, so what we ended up doing was, we had three phases of the residence halls already approved, and that area for impervious banked, essentially, and so what we did is we took that area and applied it to this project so that we wouldn't have to do any additional infiltration, and when we come back to do the next phase of the residence hall, we will have to address it at that time. So really, there haven't been any changes to the storm drainage system whatsoever for this project, except connecting our storm drain- this project, except connecting our storm drainage into the existing system.
So the, the existing system has the capacity to handle this addition?
Yes.
Okay. The, the other question was, was trying to understand from a drawing, from how your water sewer and electricity, you know, you have a transformer there. So transformer has the capacity to, to, you're going to additionally install another transformer?
Yeah, actually, that is something that's changed as we went through our pricing and due diligence period. If you, let's see. Actually, you can see the transformer right here. When we first started, we thought the transformer, we were told it was going to be adequate. It turns out it's not. So that's why we have this kind of crook in the driveway here, which actually makes it a little bit difficult to use. So this transformer is going to be getting relocated to the north, and this driveway is going to end up straightening out, still maintaining a viable planting area here, but it's going to straighten out and the transformer will move.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Commissioner Farr.
Two quick questions, both in the staff report and your letter to staff. You, you talked as well this evening about the master plan. And I, I see some language in here about the broad-reaching master plan aims at modernizing materials and systems around, and in the staff report, it says the same thing, to revamp the aesthetics of the campus, building additional materials are more modern and reflect current styles. And frankly, I like the way you're going with the style, so that's great. That said, are we to expect then, application of this design theme on more part of the facade in future phases of this revamping master plan? And if so, to what extent can you help us understand what's coming in the future for this?
Yes, I would say the answer is definitely yes. And in terms of what projects they may be applied to, we've discussed a, currently right now, let's see, I think you'd probably see it in your overall site plan, but down at the bottom of the, here. Right now, here's a performing arts center. This is one of the projects that we've envisioned, performing arts center here, gymnasium here. There's kind of a service area right in here, that what we're planning on doing in the future is creating a more robust athletics component to the project. And so students, visiting students and athletes would be able to use that, those facilities and access the, the field much eas, more easily. So when you're talking about a new architectural expression, here we have a brick building, we have a brick building between that, you know, kind of making this insertion of modern materials. And so we hope to move forward on wherever we, we have an opportunity to insert these materials in a creative way, to actually even give the existing a little bit more life by virtue of being next to something new. We plan to do that. We've done some of that already on the ECE renovations that we talked about. We added some bright bands of color nichihah. We also added integral sunshades, brand-new windows. We, I think I referenced earlier, the stucco band canopy that was there. We took that off and put more nichihah on. That's like kind of a corrugated look to make it crisp and clean and modern the best we can.
Okay, thank you. I was getting to the point of, if we had to ask, you're asking for variance this time around, so I'm, I'm looking forward to possible setting the stage for our commission to keep looking at this and keep looking at more variances, just something we ought to keep in the back of my mind. Thank you. Second question, I didn't see any parking calculations, and although this is a very small addition, and there's probably not a, a large increase in staff, you talked about the growing population of the campus. And can you tell us a little bit about your parking, existing parking and how you're doing on that? And, and maybe a small reason why you didn't add any for this particular?
Well, right now, the parking seems adequate. I mean, I, I think, I'm not sure of the student count right now, it's up, it's around 400, and the parking is really sized for about 1,000 students right now. We do, so it's adequate right now, and, and, you know, as a result, it's not like the school is all full and then we're adding these classrooms and getting, get more students in. That's not really the way it is. Most of the classrooms are already built out and they're waiting to get filled up. If we do need to add to our parking, we do have an area, it's like the one remaining upland area on the west side of the roadway, and that would be right here. And I can't remember how many spaces that adds, but I'm going to say about 80 spaces.
Thank you. No more questions.
Thanks, Commissioner Farr. Any other questions? Julie, will you take us through the planners' report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, the applicant is seeking an amendment to a, an existing planned unit development or a PUD, as well as an amendment to the site plan for the classroom and cafeteria addition. As Mr. Harris stated, there is one PUD waiver that's being requested. It was for that west facade that does not, as it's proposed, comply with the 75% Class 1 material requirement per facade. However, staff is recommending approval of that waiver, subject to a variety of factors, some of those factors including that the campus overall far exceeds the 75-25% split required by code, as well as the placement and location of the addition, visibility from other properties, from public rights of way, those sorts of things. So staff is recommending approval of the plan as proposed, as noted to a certain degree in Mr. Harris's presentation, there will be some landscaping materials that are added as a part of the square footage that's being added to the project. There are no trees that are being removed, so there's not a tree replacement requirement, solely a landscaping requirement based on the size and mass of the building that is being added. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the city? Commissioner Mitty.
Julie, can you explain the difference between a PUD concept review and a PUD district review and why this project needs to go through both of those processes?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, city code states that a PUD should not be approved unless it complies with a PUD concept review. So when a PUD comes back through the process with a new phase, let's call it, or an expansion, then as a matter of course, the city will run a PUD concept review at the same time as the PUD district review. So it doesn't add any more additional step, if you will, or process, but in order to comply with the requirements of code, we do run both of those simultaneously.
Thank you.
Commissioner Villarreal.
So following up a bit on that question, I was wondering if you could more directly address the material, the written words here in bold in the narrative from Harris and Associates regarding the, their interpretation of the zoning ordinance and the material requirements. If you wouldn't mind, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I thought you were done with your comments. With regard to the comments that are provided in the narrative, I would say that the city code does require 75% of Class 1 materials per facade, not by the overall calculation of the building. That is a recent change that came about as part of the design standards. So historically, as Eden Prairie developed, there may have been times when the building materials were looked at overall for the building, and knowing that Mr. Harris has quite an extensive timeframe and commitment to this overall project, that might be how previous projects were reviewed. However, in 2016, 2017, when we updated the design guidelines, that change was made to code, requiring the facade be 75%, which is why staff has directed the applicant to pursue either updating the materials to be code compliant or request a waiver. And they have opted to request the waiver.
Additional questions? So the facade, the, that gets triggered regardless of whether it's an addition or a brand-new building? Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, yes and no. It is triggered on this west facade because there's not a, a building addition or building facade that it's being added to. So if you take a look at the north and south facades, just the addition area itself does not meet the 75%, but when you average it out with the remaining facade of that building, then it does. So the west side, because it doesn't have an existing building to draw upon, triggers the need for that waiver.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for the city?
Ms. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner. I'm just going to stick my neck in and, and challenge that interpretation just a little bit. It's a, I'm going to say a gangly building, but maybe it just is more serpentine in, in shape. And I wondered how staff decided to just measure that west facade solely at that one appendage of the building facing west, as opposed to the entire west facade, as seen from the neighbors or the parking lot, from north to south, all the way down the hill. In driving up and down the, the campus, it seems like the building is a whole, as opposed to, it potentially could have been built in phases and, given your longevity with the project, I trust that it probably was. And yet it, it looks as a whole building. And so I, I was just curious as to why you honed in on just that portion of the building, building number two, I'll call it, that stuck out, because that was the one that being remodeled, as opposed to measuring that entire west facade.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, when staff is dealing with either a building expansion on an existing structure or, or a non-conforming structure, we strive really, really hard to provide equitable interpretations and make sure that if we relay a message to one property owner, it is the same message that is relayed throughout the community to all property owners. So we've had several inquiries since the design, review of the design guidelines for existing buildings looking to add on. So in some cases, those buildings are already code compliant, like the International School, where they either meet or exceed the building material requirements. In other cases, it may be a non-conforming situation, so in those cases, we're really working harder with the property owners in order to get closer to achieving that 75% requirement. So as a part of looking at how to best interpret the applications that are in code, we're really looking to try and apply those equitably and consistently with the other buildings within the community and making sure that we're not holding different property owners to different standards. So we want to make sure that that message is inclusive, if you will, and that's really what led us to the interpretation that we're at.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak in favor or against the project, please do so now. Seeing no one, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner here has moved to closing the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor of a closed public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. All right, any further discussion about this request in front of us? Commissioner Mitty.
I just have one, one comment, I think, yes, to the applicant to keep in mind. I don't think this is necessarily something that we need to spell out or require, but having the entry to the trash room, you know, I've, I've seen this condition in some buildings and a lot of times with, with retail buildings, which might be a more extreme example, but just the concerns about the smell and over time, you know, refuse and, and kind of grease buildup and whatnot happening there, right where you have your entry. So I would encourage the applicant to both on the interior of the trash room and then the exterior, consider the materials and the way that it's built and designed. You want to be able to get, you know, a really powerful power wash to go through there and on the inside and be able to hose down those walls completely, keeping that room clean to avoid smells. But then also, when you have the garbage trucks coming in and out all the time, and if you're rolling out dumpsters, rolling them back, you're going to get, you know, the ground's going to start getting stained, that concrete's going to look kind of icky over time. So maybe consider using a dark stain to the concrete or something that might help hide that. I think that will help, you know, keep that area looking nicer and avoid smells. And then, I guess, lastly, to make sure there's proper ventilation in that trash room for, you know, smells too.
Other comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just, just a comment. Commissioner Farr and his question, I think, was a, was a very good one and interesting one, and I understand where staff strives to put as, make as black and white as we can, some of these decisions. But particularly in a circumstance like this, where we're renovating an older, an older structure and the, the high standards, I think Eden Prairie has, the 75% Class 1 materials, I actually like it coming in front of the planning commission and, and having the discussion on, on the waiver. I, I think that's a healthy thing to do, and I don't, I don't know that it's easy to make that as black and white as maybe it would be nice to. So I, I like the process we're going through right now and having that come in front of the planning commission and have the opportunity to, to discuss those, what I would call borderline or questionable interpretations. Just, just a comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. Commissioner Villarreal?
So I'll follow up on that. My initial readings of the materials, my initial inclination was, I don't know really why they're here, because it seems to me to fall within, that I didn't see the need for them to come and ask for a waiver. So, you know, I don't mind them coming through the proceeding and having discussions so we can, you know, pick at it a little bit. I guess my overall concern of, and I guess this is why staff wants to be consistent on, on these interpretations, is so that if there needs to be a waiver, then they do come to us. But the flip side is, you know, if, if there is a development, and I think this one kind of fits in it, that isn't quite black or, black or white, that can go forward without a waiver, we sort of put them through a, through time and effort for something that is an interpretation. And I'm fine with where this is going, and my concern isn't with the project, it's more with the process, that I'm not entirely convinced that this should have gone through a waiver process.
Julie, would you like to respond to that?
Mr. Chairman, as the commission, just a couple of clarification comments. So the waiver request is not solely what's prompting this review. The addition is, I believe it's 5,200 square feet or so in size? 57, excuse me, 5,700 square feet in size. City code does allow for a streamlined review process. If the addition is 10% of the building area or 2,000 square feet, whichever is less, then it can go straightforward to the city council. But otherwise, if you have, as a property owner, have a PUD and a site plan approval that shows the parameters of your project, if you will, and you're adding on to it, if you exceed those requirements, you're automatically triggered into a PUD and site plan review. So even if they had been code compliant on that west facade, this project would have required review by the planning commission and city council due to its size.
Thank you for the clarification. Other comments?
I just want to applaud you and the, the owners of the property and the business for identifying circadian rhythms in terms of your lighting scheme, because that is an exceedingly important factor in student learning and teacher well-being.
And the other?
Ms. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner Farr. I would like to also thank the applicant for, you know, maintaining the continuity of this one architect throughout the lifespan of this building. Sometimes when clients would like to change the overall impression and look of the building, they'll change architects, and I think we're in the hands of the, the original creative author here and will handle that with more sensitivity perhaps than, than a fresh set of eyes. And so I appreciate that when you're going about a, a revamping of the exterior materials, et cetera. I have no problem with the fiber cement paneling product being used on the building to, to solve those new creative challenges ahead of you. I think it's a nice-looking project and look forward to more enhancements to the school in the future. Well done.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept review on approximately 55 acres, planned unit development concept review on approximately 55 acres, and site plan review on approximately 55 acres. 55 acres, and site plan review on approximately 55 acres, based on the staff report dated April 4, 2019, and the plan stamped dated March 22, 2019.
I have a motion for Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Farr will give it to you. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Project is approved. Good luck in your addition, and thank you for your continued investment in the campus.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck. All right. Moving on this evening, do we have any planners' reports?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would just like to remind the commission that staff had sent out an email about the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District open house that's scheduled for, I believe it's April 10. We have gotten RSVPs from a couple of you, but if there are more of you that are planning on attending, please let us know, because if we're looking like we're going to, excuse me, hit a quorum, we need to notice a public meeting. So, just let us know if you're planning on attending. That's it.
All right. Any members' reports this evening? Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
All right. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor adjourned in the meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Meeting's adjourned.